Worked out on April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Um, roll call with Jim Bryant.
Here.
Jay Anderson. Jeremy Kanek, your three's we are instead.
Here.
Rachel Schoenfelder.
Here.
Uh, Jen Tiff.
Here.
And Superintendent Joshic and Ryan Reister. Do I have someone that will approve an agenda?
All the motions, your first agenda, we're posting.
One second. Uh, motion by Michelle Felder, second by Mr. Kanek. Any discussion? All those, all those, uh, or, uh, both of those through the agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent comments. So, uh, for the most part here, we'll, I'll kind of carry these two as we go. So if we start on the, mostly on the first one, on the finance update there. So, as you know, uh, we're looking at budget deficit for the upcoming year. The number that, uh, we had calculated was one point seven hundred dollars. Um, what we are doing is we're doing everything we can to approach those numbers. Uh, but in doing so, it would definitely the probability that there's going to be some negative impact on twos, uh, amongst other things. So what I ended up doing, Lisa and I sat down and we went through. So we've given each of the building principals a budget target. Um, so what I've asked them to do is to go through and make a list of intentions. Now, each one of those potential things that will end up changing has ramifications across the system. So what I've asked them to do is get those to me by Thursday of this week. So I can look those over. What I'd like to be able to do is have another workshop where we can discuss those in depth prior to the regular board meeting at the end of the month, which means basically next week. So I wanted to check and see if that's something that could be workable, perhaps next Monday. If we can, um, we'd like to schedule that, uh, use the staggered up and then get that on, get that on the works. So it's the typical five thirty time work, okay? Okay, so if that's the case, um, that they'll schedule that meeting. And that way we can have some time to review those a little bit more in depth. I need to be able to see what they're gonna bring first before I bring that to you. And that way Lisa and I can look things over, um, and see where we end up going. Now, on a related issue, what I've, you know, we've been looking at, uh, cost saving measures along the way. So that obviously ends up involving anything from, uh, buildings and grounds to teaching staff, et cetera. At the same time, we may need to start looking down the road for some method where we can look at increasing our revenue. Okay, um, so student numbers is one way to end up doing that. And we don't have a ton of direct control on that. So if we look at the amount that our taxpayers are contributing to the school over the last number of years, we'll put something together on this, but we've got, um, some building bonds that are falling off. So our tax rates are going down. You'll recall our levy for the upcoming year has gone down. If we could get to a point where we could go through this and kind of just keep that number relatively flat instead of having, you know, those taxes go down. I don't, not looking to end up with a big tax increase, but at the same time, if we kind of maintain where we're at, that would really, that would really help. So I've got a call in with Ebers. Um, I should be, I think we'll be able to meet with them tomorrow, um, just to look at some different options. What I'm curious about is what's the tax impact on different measures? And at this point, uh, Lisa and I have thought, instead of necessarily having an operating referendum, which is, um, the one way that you do it, perhaps look at, uh, some different kinds of bonds or the facility bonds or technology bonds or some pieces like that, where the revenue that we're currently utilizing out of the general fund could be used instead or replaced by some of that. But again, it falls into the categorical pieces that we've gotta spend money on certain ways. So I'm getting started on looking into what those options are. Because as we look forward here, um, like I said, regardless of what we end up doing for FY twenty-six, we've got bigger things on the rise than FY twenty-seven and beyond. So those are things that we are, we want to be like. So anybody got any particular questions about anything that I just kind of tossed out there at the moment?
Are we aware of what we need to open for, uh, what we have right now?
So I have the list, you know, so we've got, again, these different bonds that are coming off. So there was a, a bond that was gotten for lights here. That was, what, three years ago? How long ago was that Lisa? I don't remember. I looked at it the other day.
Oh, twenty-two.
Two?
Twenty-two. And that's, that's ongoing.
Yep.
As is the eighteen, it's the sixteen that's gone.
The sixteen, yeah. So there's a number of different bond issues and they're always numbered by year. So what we want to do is see as these fall off, what's the tax impact of those falling off, you know? And just like I say, see if we can balance it out. So we're not necessarily asking for a big increase from our voters, but to be able to maintain some of that revenue.
Did you, can the ninety-one is our operating referendum up?
So that was a, Lisa?
Um, I think we're doing it until twenty-eight.
Well, that's on, yeah, because it was a seven-year, it was a seven-year referendum.
Yep.
And I think it was twenty-one.
Right, but it was, it was from the vote, it was delayed until this next year, the first year.
I think it's thirty-one, they finally put it off.
Thirty-one, okay.
So that's where, and as you go forward, you know, we've got that existing operating referendum that's in place. Under changes to law a few years ago, to get to that point, the board has the authority to renew that existing referendum as long as you don't change any of the terms. So whatever the terms were then, that, you know, so you have that authority to be able to do that. We have to have public hearing about it, but it's still, the board has the authority to renew. So those are some things that we're, we're looking at. And then, um, honestly, we're trying to figure out ways that we can kind of, kind of reimagine what school can look like. You know, right now, everything that we do in seat time, every, you know, can we end up with kinds of a plan where we end up with, um, a situation where individual learning is a little more taken into account, a little bit more interest? Lots of work that would have to be done there, but I think that in the long term, that can benefit our kids and that can benefit our community and it can benefit our school. It's kind of some of the stuff we talked about a little bit before that we're just starting in infancy, trying to figure out what that can look like. And that's gonna take a lot of, a lot of input from our community, from the board, from staff, from students. So a lot of work to be done there, but we need to get started on that. And so we gotta start working towards that now. So, yeah, and, yeah, the schools are, you're absolutely right. Schools are gonna look different ten years from now, just because the dollars are getting so high when you talk about two percent raise or increase or two point seven five. It doesn't cover it because everything else is so high now, costs is going up. So imagine, I, here's a crazy one, not a crazy one, the one I just thought of and it's like with them, I think everything, we're just throwing the water on the table, on the floor and seeing where it goes. Um, we talk about not trying to hurt the kids and, but we may have to lay out staff. Um, more of a, I'm gonna, more of an online school where one day a week, the kids come to a building, get connection with some teachers and the rest is online. And then you're gonna have, you know, a teacher of forty, fifty, sixty kids and then come have helpers and the other day they come to a building. I'm just throwing something out here. Don't get me wrong, I'm not advocating it, I'm just saying, we gotta, we, we gotta look at differently because right now we don't have any control over the revenue that the state gives us. They, the legislature, a hundred and one of them and the governor decide what schools across the state of Minnesota get. Um, yeah, and we, referendums are not the way to handle it in my eyes. The state should be putting, holding up or the school districts themselves should be having living authority for their population. But, uh, in the end of the day, since they're not thinking of different ways to, to help us out, us meeting everybody in the school, because I'd say nine percent of the schools in this state are looking at deficit spending in, for the next fiscal year. So I just, I just throw an idea out there that the four-day school day is one, um, you know, those type of things.
Lots of opportunities.
Lot of options. You know, you can do it one day, the, but then again, I'm gonna look at Mr. Pagel over there. The little ones probably need more in, in class, that, that area. So even this, uh,
I was thinking.
This rule, that rule. And, uh, no, I would think, I forgot to say that till I saw you. But, uh, so you might just have the middle school and the high schools where it's more of an online and then you have more time after school to do activities, you wouldn't be missing schools. But I'm just throwing ideas out here.
Well, I think there's ways that we can really do a good job with it. And that's where a lot of the work that we're talking about with artificial intelligence can help with that. Uh, we're not looking to replace, but again, the world's changed. There's ways that we can do this, I think, differently. Um, so right now, uh, a little bit of an update there. So we had that alumni, alumnus who has talked with us with the district a little bit about a proposal. Um, so right now, uh, we are working on creating a proposal for that individual, potentially fun. So the goal is to have that, uh, in his hands before the end of May. And some things are probably already kind of getting started, um, around AI. As far as, we've already had some workshops and things. Uh, Emily's been working on some stuff already for fall. We've been engaging with a guy that, um, really is kind of leading things in Minnesota right now. So we've got some, we've got some opportunity in those details. I don't have them yet, but once those details come forward, I'll be able to share more about this.
I was gonna throw something just on the table like water and see where, where it goes as well. Just, um, talking about our buildings that we currently own, like we're trying to get rid of Jefferson still. But do we even need all the remaining buildings we have? But I know some schools are to the brim, you know, sunny side and burnside, but we have cobble in the high school who aren't at capacity. And can we combine some of that and eliminate another brick and mortar building?
It's something that needs to be, needs to be brought to the, into consideration. Because, you know, here at the high school, I think I mentioned it before, the building was created in ninety-five or one of their laws for about fifteen hundred kids. Evidently, when that first started, you guys were at capacity and then some. Two fifty a class, I think it was, two thirty to two, let's just say two thirty to two sixty were classes back then. Yeah, so we had a, you know, a bigger number. Now we've got eleven hundred kids in high school, you know, so we've got some space. So I know that one of the things, to me, one of the first things that I would consider is bringing the seventh grade to the high school. And I know that that's been a little bit of a worry for people before. I think that we can structure things in a manner that we can kind of have a seventh, eighth grade wing and then the nine, nine twelve to be able to keep those kids a little bit further apart. Um, that ends up helping with some things with teacher licenses, because a lot of times your teacher licenses are seven, twelve. Right now we've got elementary teachers and middle school teachers, you know, so I think there's some opportunity there. The other thing is, um, if you end up looking at, unfortunately, when you end up closing a building, you end up with some savings there, it's just not a ton all the time. Because you would end up saving, you know, probably on your, you know, your food service, your custodians, you'd probably end up with one pure admin somewhere, you know, some of those. So there are, I mean, there are savings.
And maintenance.
And maintenance, you know, and then ultimately what you do with the building. But all of those different things, so you end up saving, you know, end up saving money by closing a building and you're gonna come up with one point seven hundred dollars, that wouldn't happen, you know? But it is something that I do think does need to be considered. And that would require a refiguration on how we currently do some stuff. And also whether, and again, not suggesting any one way, shape or form of the other, but, okay? Can cobble in that building, can those kids come to high school? Could those kids go somewhere? I mean, there's lots of different ways to look at it. And no matter what, um, you know, it's, change is hard. Well, it's not, there's a lot of smaller theories about, they still have to take it through all the, you know, se- separated out of course, and that's, and that's what you're discussing, so. So anyway, all the things to consider, and like I say, we're working, Lisa and I, we've got focused stuff date about, you know, where can we end up getting our most savings, where can we end up having the least impact on our students? What's best for our families? These are daily conversations.
Well, I think if we, like, having this, the grant from three M, and if we learn, figure out how to harness AI appropriately, I think of field of drinks. If you build it, they will come. If we build a school that offers some unique programming and set ourselves apart from others around us, that could also bring in enrollment, focus on the kids for a year and doing the best we can for those kids.
So again, I think there's opportunities, it's scary, you know, that, you know, whether you're an administrator or you're a teacher, that for parents, change is hard. Still think we can go ahead and, I think it can be really exciting. So, anyway, that's, uh, kind of where we're at with our finance piece at this point. Uh, we'll be able to share more of this information on potential reductions next week. And then we'll be able to, okay? Uh, so the, the next one there is the policies. These are the ones that they don't have any changes. Um, so that, that's a pretty standard piece there. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, the, uh, four-day school discussion. So this is something Jim had brought up a fair while ago. Currently there are seven schools in the states that have a four-day school week system approved. Um, there's a number of school districts that are looking into it pretty hard for next year or for the next year, the following year. Um, and again, on any time you end up with that, so typically what you end up with is you lengthen your school day and then you end up with one last day where you're bringing people in. Typically that ends up being either Friday or Monday because of the relation to the weekend. But anytime you make a change along those lines, it definitely has an impact on the community. Because, uh, things like daycare, um, you know, that's a big one that people will, almost always that ends up being a primary concern because what do I do with my kid every Friday? Um, then, uh, you know, people worry about the length of the day. And for us, when we've got our two-tiered busing system, how early and how late are we gonna end up having to have our, our elementary students be somewhere, you know? Um, in some cases, uh, positive. Sometimes it ends up where you can align your days so it works out a little bit closer to people's traditional workday. So it actually makes it a little bit easier for them to drop kids off, get to work, pick them up, et cetera. There's positives, there's negatives, and what might be a positive for me might be a negative for you. So that's the way that always ends up being.
How do the districts that have gone to a four-day school week, how do they handle with their extracurricular activities that are five day a week? So you have a football practice on Friday and that's a scheduled day off. Like with, I mean, I know parents usually only transport you once in a day and all of a sudden now it's.
So, uh, with extracurriculars, typically they transport themselves to, you know, they drive to school for practice. It'd be just like I suppose if you had a practice on Saturday for some reason. Um, so that's, you know, that gets to be a little bit harder in some cases. Your high school kids, more of them drive, and then you've got junior high kids that are still involved in activities. Ends up being different. So, um, I guess I haven't, uh, dug that, you know, into that specifically. But again, they're all factors, you know? So where we would end up, really for us, because we spend a lot on transportation, that's where we've got an opportunity to really end up with savings. Because if we could end up with twenty percent savings on our, just on our transportation costs, well, that's, I mean, pushing six hundred dollars. Well, that's a pretty good number.
Do you think the bus company though would be agreeable to, you know, they were pretty firm in our ordering with them that they wanted to ensure their workers had like full-time, like full days, not half-days? You know, would they even agree to having workers do four days versus five? They were so.
Which is, again, that's another, it's another factor, you know? So all of those things, I mean, there's a gazillion details that would go into a, that would go into a four-day week. Um, I just hardly scratched the surface on it. Um, one of the districts that I was a neighbor with many years ago when I was first superintendent was in Black Duck, Minnesota, they did a four-day week. They're probably one of the ones that have stayed with it the most consistently. I think they went to it back in like two thousand nine and I think that they've continued there. Most of the schools, I don't know of any school districts that are the size of Red Wing that have gone this route. Typically they end up being smaller school systems, um, but, um, it's like anything else. Not to say that anything can't be done. Do they go to districts wide, they scan through twelve? Yeah, everything, okay, that's to what Jim and Mike were talking about, you know? Having those younger kids, I know there was a, oh, I think it was two years ago. I think initially the, um, younger kids were supposed to start a year. So we got the, you know, uh, uh, well, absolutely, yeah, opposite, and there was a significant outcry because how are, you know, we have to work, how are we gonna get these young kids, at least fifth graders, and how can take care of themselves a little bit more? So again, all of those are very serious discussions that would need to be had with the community.
Do you know, did those schools on four-day school weeks, did they offer like wraparound care for like daycare on Friday? Like through our kids' junctions or?
Most of them didn't, you know, they, um, most of them, you know, and I don't know exactly how the community has adapted specifically, but most of them, you know, they figured it out somewhere.
So my high school does it right now and they're one of the seven. And they do have wraparound care.
Don't.
At the district?
Yeah, at your school.
So instead of coming to school, you just come to school without daycare? Like kids' home?
It's like this.
Like a day off school, or a normal school day?
Would that be funded? Would that be funded by the state? Would that have to, would the parents have to cover that? Would, what, draft, this wraparound care?
Depends on, I mean, what, how are we gonna decide? Yeah, it's not funded by the state, you know? It would be, again, you know, I'd imagine the primary would be the people who utilize the service, you know? So, I mean, so that ends up in some cases being a financial burden for families because before you own, you didn't have daycare, and all of a sudden I got that daycare every time for everyone, whatever it is. So.
We could reach out to those schools.
Yeah.
And get information.
Yeah, and so that kind of stuff, I mean, like I say, I can gather some more information just to kind of see. I'm curious to see, um, we'd have to do a, a bit of a calculation to kind of see what our potential savings could be, you know? So, but anyway, I mean, we might find that, we might find that we could end up with pretty substantial savings, but that just doesn't work. And that could be the outcome. Or maybe it is, I don't know. And I, I just read in the paper, I thought I read in the paper about a few weeks ago, the St. Louis County went to a four-day school day. No, I don't think St. Louis County, I think Carlton. We said St. Louis Carlton, Carlton's been in for a while, but St. Louis, the Tribune's had it in there. Okay, so.
But I know International Falls is considering it right now, I think they're.
I think it's gonna be next year, I, I read the article right, but could be, probably, it's been a while yet, so. But at least we're having the discussion, um, before COVID. A lot of things we do nowadays are pre-COVID and after COVID. How many times do you say that? Was that before COVID, was that after? After COVID, how many people are now working in the morning? Two. Well, that's a good case, but now they're.
But now they're coming.
That could be a problem for people that work, you know, those things.
Yeah. It could be a positive, it could be a negative. Like I said, when I said, when I brought it up, I said, there's pros and cons to it. That we have to transportation and, uh, you, somebody said about how extracurricular activities, you know, schedule most of them on Friday or Monday, whatever the day, if you chose to go that route. So there's ways to have those conversations. But yeah, you gotta have the conversation with the community. I think the last time I saw somebody that did it was like seventy-some, twenty-some percent. Seventy were two percent of the community was in favor of it and twenty percent weren't. It's gonna be that way no matter what you do. You start, you decide to have all day, all year school, you leave it before against it, so. You know, you gotta make the best decision that you can do because as we started this conversation earlier tonight, it's looking different, it's gonna look different down the road too. But it's realistic. Um, how do we have to, oh, sorry, oh, no, I shot it.
Um, how do they, how do they address questions of attention span in kids?
Well, that's one of the, that's one of the things. You got little people, so if you've got, you got kindergartners, you know, let's not that.
Yeah, I would say currently, at the end of our day now, you know, we run seven forty-five to two fifteen. Five and six-year-olds are pretty beat by the end of the day. I know, I'm pretty beat by the end of the day.
I know a forty-six-year-old that has a tough time to stay in the classroom, right? True. You know, but the, uh, again, some of the, some of the communities that have gone this route, they, you know, the systems have adapted, the communities have adapted to it, and it works. You know, there's some that, you know, they can't value them going back. Um, there's others that try it and after a couple of years are like, wow, not, this isn't working at all. And then they went back to a traditional day. So.
But the majority of them, since a lot were the small, like, or northern towns, my guess is they probably did it because they had first time doing staff more so than a budget thing, or is that?
It was all budget.
It was all budget.
It was always budgeted. Um, you know, the, the staffing needs, you know, when a lot of this ended up, again, this is probably fifteen years ago when a lot of them first really started working, because there was some real tough times back then too. Um, most of it, it was all, it was budget driven.
So would staff, would that be a staff work day on Fridays or?
No, because they work longer days.
Right, the rest, well, I'm just asking.
So then, because one of the, one of the benefits of a four-day week, at least in theory, and it's not always possible. And it's like, that's why Black Duck, I think, ended up having their day off on Monday instead of Friday. Because on Friday, dentists off to the spools. On Monday, you know, people have a tendency, they're able to schedule some more of those things. You end up with a little bit less absenteeism in your staff. For some of them, it was actually a, it ends up being a recruiting pool because people, well, that's it. So, you have lots of buses, probably an equal number of vendors.
That's also a way to negotiate a raise in pay without actually spending more money. Because now you're working four days instead of five. That does give you an increase in salary.
But I heard you're working more hours.
Oh, yeah, never mind, I guess. I'm thinking in terms of days, I feel like it was a good deal. Good thing I'm not a negotiator.
So anyway, those are just things to consider there. Do you want me to, you know, dig deeper into this or how would you like me to proceed? And so, we can, I mean, like I said, no instant answers and, but I can, I can very easily contact, uh, the communities. There's only seven of them, so that's easy enough to do. I can bring more information to the, to you guys and we'll go from there. I think it's a bigger topic than just for us to sit and wrestle with tonight. Oh, yeah, but at least, you know, so then, kind of related, the year-round school discussion, I don't have anything to go off with as far as what that should potentially look like. I, I don't know of any schools in Minnesota that currently have that model. There's a couple of charter schools evidently, there's one in Apple Valley, I think. It's a charter school that has a year-round calendar and maybe one or two others, but I've never had any interaction with them to know what that looks like. From what I understand, you know, they would, you just kind of break up your year where you've got a week off here and a week off there, problem?
My niece went to one in Minneapolis and she was a nine weeks on, three weeks off and then had most of July and August off. My niece went to one in Minneapolis, and she was a nine weeks on, three weeks off, and then had most of July and August off. And so, it, I, I guess when I look at it, nine, nine weeks on, three weeks off, it doesn't, still puts out the daycare situation for the younger kids that, you know, you're gonna need daycare three weeks in a chunk of time, which could be a bigger effect for even some of our daycare providers, because you never know, right? They'll be full every three weeks instead of like the times they usually are, but, I mean, she did it, she loved it, but it was, it was a small art school in Minneapolis.
Well, I think it's a big Minnesota thing, but other states, like California, like West.
Yeah, nationwide, I just looked that thing, and it said that it was actually about ten percent of schools across the nation have some form of year round. I, I've never seen in Minnesota, I've never been part of a conversation, you know, here in Minnesota, we're pretty proud of summer. You know, and it's one of those things that, so that's why we don't start school until April.
I think it would be really hard to be an isolated school district, even within our athletic conference, when you start thinking about all our speech and knowledge for our sports and how do you fit that into that competition season, which wouldn't coincide necessarily with our school season.
I guess I can see both sides of that, though, I mean, if you're here more so throughout the whole year, especially throughout the summer, you're getting more engagement for those kids, too.
Well, you end up.
Because your seasons would still be the same time.
And, you know, like, one of the potential benefits of something like that is you end up, where you don't end up with this gap, so when kids come back in September, where we spend the first month, that's not.
Well, that's a, a show of most of the regression happens over the summer.
Yeah.
You know, anyhow, engaged, keep your children, you know, what regression is.
So that one, like I said, that's a, a different model, uh, that I, that one definitely takes some research. Well, at least scratched the surface on that one, I'm probably gonna focus a little more on the four day discussion right now, um, and then see if I can come up with some resources revolving around the possibility of year round.
How does, like, um, considering a four day week or even year round school, how does that align with, like, bargaining with the unions?
That's also, I mean, the, the school district has the right to set the calendar, you know, but, and, again, having not gone through this, I don't know what kind of contractual pieces need to be addressed, that would be another question. So, um, the last one that we kind of talked about there, or like to talk about today, just because I don't know how familiar you are with it, is the non-renewal process. So there's a little document here that we printed out, and this comes right out of Minnesota School Board Association, and it's a U N A on, on request leave of absence. So, there are timelines that have to be met and certain things that we've already taken. So the first thing is the seniority list, they went through that process, uh, we approved that in February, so that piece is already done. Then, okay, the next piece there, we have a need for staff reductions, okay, that's part of identifying the number that we're looking at, okay? We've got a deficit next year of one point seven nine dollars, how does that get addressed? Then, there was that resolution that we undertook, the one that maybe hadn't been done for a little while, resolution directing and admin to make recommendations, that has been done, and now we are in the in-between place here. So right now, we're approaching step four. So we make recommendations, uh, for reductions. And on that, anytime you do it, you reference specific positions, you don't say, Mr. Pagel, we are going to reduce you your position, and that's gonna be, I know it's coming, okay? So with those, the difficulty with this always is, anytime you identify a position within the school system, it's pretty easy for people to connect the dots, and positions are always people, okay? By the law, we have positions, but in reality, we have people, okay, so that's, um, what that ends up being. So then, uh, we would end up coming up, and this would be, uh, in the end of April here now, so I would be doing homework next week. We would have a resolution that would, um, reduce X number of positions or reduce these positions, they would be itemized. So that way, we know that we would be reducing one point O F T D of position, A, B, C, or D, okay? So, when we end up doing that, so you have your, your youngest teachers, or your least tenured, non-tenured teachers, are the first ones that end up being, uh, potentially in that position. The difficulty that you end up with, like last year, we had a fair number of people that we hired, or they left the district for whatever reason, and they were individuals that were a little bit more senior, so then you end up with a lot more cost savings for somebody who's more senior than you've got somebody who's a first year teacher, okay? So then you end up, in order to get to the same number, you have got to reduce more, and again, that has more impact. So, these are all things that we've got to make sure that we discuss as we go into this next week, because it's one thing to say that we're, you know, if we have a teacher that put their family insurance or whatever, um, you know, it's a hundred thousand dollar position. Well, if you've got a younger teacher, that might be a sixty thousand dollar position. It ends up being, again, a, a pretty fine dance as we go through all of this, okay? And again, every, I've said this before, every dollar that we end up spending in the school ends up being attached to someone, okay? Whether it's somebody's favorite teacher, or one of our employees, or whoever, that's the reality. So, um, we go through that, so then there's some specific steps there, so then ultimately, when you get to step eight, then you provide notices to the individuals who are being non-renewed, um, or placed on an unrequested leave of absence. So a non-renewed, so if you're a teacher that if you're in your first three years, you haven't been offered your fourth contract, those individuals have different rules than somebody who has been here for ten years, okay? Once you get to the silverstone, the non-renewed are, again, your non-tenured teachers, if you're kind of using the old language. And then when you get to the point where, hey, I don't have any probationary teachers, now we have to get into the seniority list. So maybe you've got somebody who's in year six, those are tenured teachers, then the process for them is an unrequested leave of absence. And then, what we end up with, what we gotta consider here, is when you start putting, whether it's a teacher, or maybe a custodian, or whoever, we have cost savings there, but then maybe we have increased costs in our employment, you know, so it's not a direct dollars or dollars savings, okay? So then, the board, then we end up with a list, so when we get to, you have to have individual hearings. So if somebody gets placed on an unrequested leave, they have the right to a hearing, okay? So they can come and they can say their piece, you know, that can be taken into consideration, uh, those are always uncomfortable. I, at, every single time, those are uncomfortable discussions, and it's unfortunate, but that's the way that is. Um, so then, when we get all through everything, we've got the list all completed, these are the final pieces, then there's a specific notice, all of this comes out of NSBA, that goes to the teachers who are placed on an unrequested. Okay, so that's what the process is through this entire deal, um, and again, it's real hard to, um, it, it's real hard for it not to be personal, because if you've got, if you're a principal and you've got somebody who's been working in your building, you have a relationship with them, you've got parents who have relationships with kids, it's always personal. At the same time, we have a responsibility to figure out a way, you know? So, the, the big reminders are on the back page of this, and I'd like to just take a quick look at those. So, um, community ed teachers, so they're now eligible for continuing contract rights, so they essentially have some of the same rights as a regular teacher would. There's a different seniority list there, so different things, so community ed's a little bit different. So, like I mentioned, the teacher's taught for three consecutive years in one district in Minnesota, or charter school. So that's an probationary period, okay? So the brand new, okay, if you offer them a fourth contract, that's when they end up getting tenure, okay? If they have been tenured, so let's say that they had worked in a different school district, they've had tenure before, they worked and they successfully completed here with you, and you offer them a second contract, now they are tenured. Okay, so there's two different categories there. Then we have tier one and tier two teachers. So these are, again, there's tier one through four, teachers three and four are the ones who are really kind of on your seniority. Teachers on tier one and two, um, they have less rights as a continuing contract teacher, okay? So, next one, a continuing contract teacher, if your position is reduced, the teacher needs to be placed on unrequested leave for the percentage of reduction. So if we're gonna reduce a position by point eight, okay? So we reduce that position by point eight, again, we can invite them back to continue to work at a point two. Not very many people can, can afford to be working at a point two, so typically, they end up leaving, you know, along those lines. So, that's what a lot of it ends up being, so it doesn't need to be at least somewhat aware as we get into the process.
How many years is a teacher who's on an unrequested leave entitled to a position, should one open up?
This was a five, or three, no, it's longer than that.
I mean, if it's five, when.
Uh, maybe it's changed, but I know that it might hit in my mind, and I might be wrong, but I thought it was a five.
So that.
That's something I didn't look into. So, again, this, that way, so right now, we're, we're within our timelines, now's when the hard work begins. I just wanted everybody to at least have a little bit of understanding of what happens.
But once you develop your, your seniority list, and you decide to, if you decide to make a staff reduction in a certain department, does the upper seniority members have the opportunity to go over it? So if you have a hired on seniority, seniority person in the department, could they, could they replace somebody that's of lesser seniority in the department or teaching?
Only if they have the appropriate licensing, and that's where it gets to be. You know, elementary teachers, you've got more, a lot more flexibility there, but if you are a licensed math teacher, okay? Well, I'm a licensed math teacher, I can't teach science, so I can't bump somebody more junior over there.
So if you're qualified, it could happen.
Yeah, you've got to do a licensure somewhere, you know, and some people do, you know, then you, so if you reduce the math teacher, and you have a science teacher who was qualified in both, and they can slide away.
The goal is to have license, bright license, and the least, or the least senior would be put on leave or non-renewed, and then making sure that those people that are staying have a bright license.
So, uh, that was kind of our little, maybe, maybe prep on some of that, so.
And if you're super curious, you could go read the teacher's contract, and it's, uh, it goes through really specifically, there's a section about unrequested leave.
Page thirty-eight.
Oh, I used to know it.
Well, our principals have been working.
Right.
At, you know, and again, I've, I've, I've given them an unenviable task, and they've been told out of it, so. So, we will work through it, we are going to do our dead set best to do it just for school and our families and workman.
It's a whole things balance.
Yep, it is, but that's why we gotta, that's why we gotta start thinking differently. We cannot continue to do things the way we have. I think it's all, I think that's only going to accelerate as we get into the next biennium, you know, we're already at a sixty million dollar deficit a couple of years down the road, so the chances that, you know, FY twenty-eighth, we're all of a sudden gonna get some more funding from the state, and then you slam. So, gotta figure it out, definitely. Yeah. All right, so, I don't know if there was anything else, or was there other topics?
For teaching, or?
Yeah, I mean, we've got a, again, we've been coming up, so if you've got anything that you'd like to.
Why is it people reaching out to me again now, probably with the scheduling that went on, frustrated again, we're still with Spanish four, five kind of stuff, and wondering why we didn't hire someone who could teach concurrent and keep students here, that there'd be enough students to fill a Spanish four and.
So again, all those things, I mean, you guys went through all those last spring, and all those people, bunch theory cuts. Um, I would, and I, I would always caution, you know, it's always, it's always hard. We always have programs that, um, we definitely wanna make sure that we respect out of the, the community's choices, you know? Sometimes we end up with programs that end up being relatively high cost per student, you know, that the community greatly doubts, you know? And you, so choices end up being made, and sometimes you end up, sometimes it ends up being licensing that ends up being problematic, and sometimes we just gotta figure out people who might do it.
Yeah, I mean, as far as Spanish four, well, Spanish five, it's not a licensure that we have, it's, it's what U of M required of our teachers. So when, um, Lord, I'm losing her name, um, the teacher who taught it before, Ms. Nemovich, right? Ms. Nemovich was not licensed to teach four to five, she had to go back to school, and she paid out of pocket all this money to do it for two years. And even with that, though, the last couple of years, um, we did not have as many students in there. I think we had thirteen people in Spanish four and ten in Spanish five, which ends up being a very expensive class to run for those. I mean, that's part of the things that we looked at, because it wasn't like we had a big program that had thirty kids in it, right? And we have let them know, if you want to go and do this, there are places you can do it, but you just have to do it early enough, like the U of M tomorrow, is there a day, their last day to accept any P S E O application for the entire next school year? And because theirs is a lot earlier than everybody else's in the state, kids didn't get on it. So there's opportunities out there, it's just that we can't offer that right now.
Can I just follow up, because I am always unclear about it, because they bring up that we offer it for German.
Yeah, we do.
So we have more kids taking German than we have taking Spanish?
Not this is, I mean, yeah, it depends on the year, to be honest, right? And German is a four year program, Spanish was a five year program, so that was different as well. And again, they're both through the U of M, um, but that's how the U had set it up. And so I think right now, we have more kids in upper German than we do in upper Spanish. Um, but looking at my numbers for next year, we have a lot of Spanish kids that want to go back into Spanish. So that number would be higher than what we have for German next year.
When you say it's a five year program, so were kids needing study in eighth grade?
Yes, when we had German, when we had up to Spanish five, they had to start it in eighth grade to be able to earn that college credit.
But I didn't think we got credit in eighth grade for classes.
We don't.
But you gotta start at the bottom to be able to get the credit at the top.
And the credit comes through, came through the U of M, not through just high school credit. So if you wanted those five, it was five college credits that you could get for Spanish, um, through the U of M, if you went all the way through Spanish five. But you had to start that in eighth grade to be able to hit that level, and again, that was set up by the U, not by us.
And that's a unique program, because you can, you can get a, you can get a college credit in college, right? Okay, we don't have to start that in. Right, okay, you don't have to start that in eighth grade.
Right, right, and, and the German four, right, that's again, set up by the U, that's ten college credits. We don't set those. It's very interesting, but that is, those are the rules that the U set up, and we play by their rules, so.
I guess the thing that I was wrestling with was, I guess you could explain that scenario specifically, but we have, like, instances where we're taking teachers that could be teaching their junior, senior students, and teaching eighth graders in classes that aren't accredited. It seems like we want to teach through the older kids, and sure, the older kids are getting accredited classes.
Well, we always ran those when we had them, had them, but like, for this last year, we couldn't run Spanish five. Our current Spanish teacher does not have the accreditation through the U of M. So that was not even an option. Spanish four, she can still teach, just as a high school credit, not through the U. We did run Spanish four this year. We have a few more looking to take Spanish four with her next year, but, you know, these kids that started wanted to get the accreditation, and we could no longer offer that. And not knowing who it was gonna be, or what it was, kids didn't sign up for it either, and therefore, we have to go by that too. So it's kind of a double-edged sword, actually.
And the accreditation rules are actually changing in September of twenty-five. It used to be a little bit more lenient, so people that were teaching college in the schools knew this, and have about four years right now to, so they pay out of pocket. We're only losing, we're losing one course next year. Um, also, also, it's an interesting one, like, it's almost hard, and then one that you could never get accredited anyways, like in some of our tech ed courses, but the accreditation is changing, and that's not, that's college rules, is the best way to describe that, so.
They're making it more difficult.
You have to have eighteen credits or a master's in the specific area of the course that you're teaching as a college in the school.
Well, for example, I've got, I've got a master's degree, but I don't have a master's degree in math and math. Well, I can't teach college calculus, even though I got a master's.
And some of our tech ed courses are only over two-year degrees, they don't even have a master's program at all.
So we're losing all of them next year.
So we're losing all of those next year, because you can't get a master's and a two-year degree.
In C and C.
In C and C, right? So they'll still be articulated through the college, but they won't be college credit unless you go to that college.
But even for vocational or tech school?
They do not offer an exception, they tried with Southeast to see what we could do, so we ended up with an articulation agreement. So there's like C and C, I'd have to look at our list, but you don't have eighteen credits in C and C, or a master's in C and C, so they go to an articulation agreement, and then we are using, um, college psych next year. Otherwise, everything else, they, um, all the staff went back, either had it, or went back to do the credits on their own.
And I don't have any personal agenda with Spanish, I just hear about it all the time.
One thing I will say though, personally, like, you know, I would go to the award banquet's, the, for the academic award banquet's. And I will say that the majority of people on the stage, like, there was always like five or six Spanish kids that achieved like a recognizing award, and I don't know, were there any other kids on anything else, maybe one in German or?
Well, so some of those are through the bilingual seals, which we have next week. And so last year, we had students taking in German, and Spanish, and a few other languages as well. But you only earn college credit for that year senior year, and so that's when you get that award. So we had students that did earn a seal last year, goes up to plenty.
Yeah, we have to hold on to them, so you can start taking bilingual seals in tenth grade.
Yep.
But you can't give it to them till they're seniors, so we have like a spreadsheet, so like, I have tenth graders taking bilingual seals next year, next week. We have to hold on to it until they're actually a senior, if that makes sense. So we have German and Spanish bilingual seals testing next week.
So even though we don't have kids that are receiving that fifth-year deal, it can still end up?
You can get college credits for bilingual seals.
Depending on the level of seal.
Seal you get.
Right, but you're not going to do as well, if you're not about to take Spanish five, the question is, can you take it someplace else? So those kids that took the Spanish seal and got it before senior year will eventually get it.
Yes.
Yes.
It just isn't, you can't have it on transcripts until, it's a weird thing, so you have to graduate it early. It's different. So they, they get to know which one they got, they just don't actually get it till they graduate, so.
And they can take it if they get a lower ranking, or they can take it again, it's not in a higher seat.
Yes. And we offer it in a ton, lots of languages when we do the signup, we just only had Spanish and German this year.
And Robin, did you say that, um, you're communicating with those kids who are in Spanish three or four about their options for next year then?
We have talks with them, yeah.
Because that was an issue, this was a personal thing for me, at my time of last year, and, um, it, it was really difficult. Spanish was one thing that she wanted to do, and was not able to do it, and did not even know that until it was too late to go in and raise out, and so, I appreciate that, I realize we have to make cuts in the, you know, we have to make hard decisions with the support, so that the kids know what to do if they can't take the classes.
I don't want to turn anyone away, but unfortunately, we have to.
Is I, I an option for Spanish five?
No, no.
So a student in Red Wing can, that is in Spanish, can only get Spanish one, two, and three?
We have Spanish four.
It's just not college. Got it. And so there would be no issue on a college-bound student, um, to major in Spanish with what their preparation is here, right? Okay.
And they could probably take, uh?
You can, they'll, you'll have, you'll take a placement test.
Right.
Before college.
And then you can buy the credit back.
Or bilingual seal.
Or bilingual seal.
Or, yeah, take your Spanish four and take bilingual seal again.
Here's something for your agenda thing. We keep talking around, dancing around the issue of enrollment. Let's have a discussion about how we can look at increasing enrollment. We had a discussion tonight on how to reduce costs about for our budget, how do we, what can we do? We, not just seven people here, the superintendent, everybody in the staff that's here, everybody in the community that's here, how do we promote, how do we get people to want to come to Red Wing? How do you beat down the negative stuff that happened so many years ago? How do you enroll, get kids to come back here through this, uh? I think a lot of it's gonna be an opportunity on how we can redo and reimagine what school can be. I know, so I'm just saying we should have, that's what I, what I like us to talk about on a regular basis, and promoting ourselves, pushing the word out there, that Red Wing is, you know, we're here, we want to, we want to be the school that people want to come to.
I think to piggyback on that, uh, focus on a like path program, it'd be great, I don't know, I think my members know a lot about all of the internships and the opportunities, and I think that would be.
You know, I'm gonna get around to like fifty-five?
There's a lot, I actually gotta watch, I slipped a, I see the kid who was at Mayo this morning.
Their graduation, they, they're talking to Mayo today?
What?
They're talking to Mayo today?
No, the internships at Mayo. When they get assigned like their weekly rotation between the different departments and stuff. Um, but I, how many partnerships we have, it's over fifty, and they just don't happen at all the time, because it depends on who the student that is aligned with that internship, so, yeah.
I've had several conversations with community leaders, you know, a couple of, they're very helpful. And so I think that would be one thing to really emphasize, and that goes hand in hand with the, um, and the, uh, with.
Yeah.
So if we could talk about that here, and have, bring in Nick, bring in parents that, of students, bring in students that have these experiences, so you can hear about the amazing things that are happening and really share those.
And maybe, they go out to, they have a little session, they have sessions where they go to Mayo, or to Little Theater, and talk about their relationship and their.
Yeah, those are, those are coming up.
Yeah, and so that's something that, Mr. Jones, if he's in, if he do us monthly, monthly news thing to the paper, or to the radio station, that'd be one thing for, to us, promote, people come and watch those, see them. Maybe we do something, maybe we actually do something in the evening, so parents can come and watch it too, then at two, thir, at noon on Thursday or something. You know, something like that, so we can get the media, the people out there to say that these are available. Anyway, I'm a big promoter, I want to promote us. Maybe I'm not, maybe that's not the right way, but I'm looking for people to show me there's different ways to, and, uh.
Well, I think promoting the positives is obviously very important, but I think, going back to a conversation we had before, the people who are choosing to leave here, there's obviously an issue, and we're not gonna be able to address that until we understand what the problem is. So I think those people know, they maybe, we have a play path program, or they know this and that, but they're still choosing to go elsewhere. So I think we need to also look at what they interpret as the reasons, their problems, or the reasons they're not coming here, and address those, I don't know how you address them if you don't identify what the issues are.
That's why I asked, let's have a conversation about enrollment, that part.
Yeah, no, I agree, I think they're hand in hand, like preaching the positives, but also trying to understand the drawbacks that are sending people elsewhere.
You can't change the past, but you can fix it. If that's, if that's, sometimes people's issues are individual, and sometimes they're not.
But we don't know, you know, we don't, we haven't done that collection of information. It was done a few years ago by, by Amy, Amy French?
If you do it again, it's actually, it's a question on the, yeah, one of his mom.
To me, the community busting to, want to promote our schools, or promote our schools, I mean, we've seen that River City days, we saw that, the booth you had down there, people in the community want to support their schools, let's give them some answers, let's give them some, let's give them a chance to talk, let's give them a, an opportunity to partner. Right now, you know, we talked to the principals the other day, what we need to do, we gotta finish strong. We made, we've had a pretty good year, I mean, really, in many ways, not to say we have not, have some problems, okay? What we gotta do is we've gotta get through the next six weeks in a good, strong manner, okay? That means, you know, doing the work that's harder, you know? And this time of year, that gets to be more and more of a challenge every day. As soon as it gets to be seventy and sunny, instead of fifty-four with a forty mile an hour wind, it changes. So, you talk to anybody that runs a business in town, they're gonna have good days and bad days. They have, they want their strong day, but they have problems, and they get through. And so we're not alone, and we do get through. But yeah, you get a thousand people playing together, they don't always play well.
One area that I, that I don't believe we emphasize enough is the college promise. I do not know of another school district that offers a similar program. There's a North Star promise, and these other promises, but it's all for specific segments of the, the sector. It's not graduate from Red Wing and get this, and we are missing it.
Absolutely right.
Now, my question for that is, I've been thinking about, and that's probably for Jones, this is, do you have to just be here your senior year? Or do you have to be here through twelve years?
You've done a lot of things, Jim. You've been doing a lot of things.
I have. Well, I've been, I've had a lot of time to think.
I did, I did reach out to Southeast Tech, and, and talk to them, I gotta go in, well, we can go in and meet with them, but they, I was just looking at their electronics lab, I'm not a lump from Southeast Tech as well, but I wanted to go through to see what their offers were, and I, I just had a conversation about, you know, numbers and, and things like that, so that would be a good conversation to have. Is that being, is that being utilized to the fullest?
It is, it is. It's definitely being utilized, I know that the, if I remember correctly, the retention rate, which is always important, I think like the, the number of kids who entered under the Red Wing College promise, I think it was almost eighty-five percent, I mean, I have to read from down the statement, it was up to the back of my head somewhere, so.
Well, this.
Before we forget.
Um, this goes back to, uh, trees, thank you for sending out that reminder email as well. Uh, Thursday, we have a meeting with the tribal council, uh, nine-thirty in the morning, we need three board members to go. I would like to go if, if that's, if, if, you know.
I went last time, so.
Okay. Likewise.
You like this time? So is it Thursday?
Thursday.
I have thirty-eight. I can do that.
I realized I have an appointment Thursday, so I can't go.
I mean, we'd like to have three if it's.
I can go.
Oh, great, they're at nine-thirty?
Yeah.
Yep.
And it's in the admin building.
The building before, which was not the building we went to.
Which, that's the one building we went to first.
That's what we went to.
Yeah, last time, yeah.
We went, I don't remember the name of the building, we went to the wrong place.
Yeah.
We're figuring it out, but. So if you want, you know, we can, we can ride together from here, or if you want to ride all the way up. Pretty much, basically, so yeah, I've got Jim, Kayla, and myself, and then, there else count, all right, great. All right, that is handled.
Uh, upcoming meetings, uh, it sounds like, uh, tentatively, we're gonna have next Monday for a workshop, which would be the twenty-first, and then, uh, the twenty-eighth, we will have the, uh, actual meeting.
Yeah, but right now.
So. All right, um, any other comments?
You can go to Jim.
We're here a second. Motion by Jim Bryant, seconded by Ms. Scholl Carter, uh, anyone else for the discussion?
Jim's just trying to get in before I ask another question.
Black months, watching three runs of the masters.
Pretty excited for Jim, huh? All right, uh, sorry, uh, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All both? Uh, did I ask the, uh, negotiations committee just?